That help at all?
Yes, now you remember some.
So, okay. So we'll have to duct tape that to make it stay. Lovely technology. Sorry, thank you.
Sometimes I recommend duct tape in court too. Okay, great, thanks for the presentation. Okay, and next is I-69 rebuilding mission project. Reading this, I mean, it's great that they're doing it. And I have no idea how I'm going to get to court because every entrance and exit is like, no. I'm gonna call my buddy Steve Francis, that's my Boris helicopter. Sure, but it's good news. So westbound first on I-69 and next year eastbound. Between M-24 and Lake George Road, seven miles. And a bunch of exits and entrances closed. Anybody have anything to add to this, just inform us of what's going on? Okay. I don't know whether council caught this or not. FEMA has officially approved LaPierre County Hazard Mitigation Plan. And I don't know whether David or Kim wants to read all 600-plus pages and let us know what's important in here. But sure, it's important. So anyway, the hazard plan has been implemented and set to go, so whatever that's worth. And then I'm just gonna add an item to our communications. There's been discussion at council about our certain ordinance enforcement officer. The report's coming back and what's going on there. And I'm moving Kat Riddle, who is our OEO, up into communicating with council at this point in time because I understand she started at 4:30 this morning?
I'm up at a court four every morning.
So anything that you would like to indicate to council at this point, please feel free.
Items are kept on there mostly from my reference because there are things I'm still following up and following through with because they're ongoing issues within the village. More pressing than that, other than that I just need to know, I need to make sure that I'm following through with these issues and getting on top of things. I know the very first item on the code enforcement, which has been here for quite a while, that property was just issued a citation today because of the ongoing blight at that property. So that's why it's on there, just so that I know that I've got to keep on it. And I know it's not the council's first thing to do is to write a citation, but because it's been on here a year now, that's long enough.
So it's a way of keeping it on the radar, so to speak? Anybody in council have questions? Been raised a couple of times, at least, what's going on because some of the items listed appear to have some age on it and it sounds like an explanation has been given. Anybody have any specific questions they'd like to ask?
But if you look further down on the report, I can't add anything more to that. So if you look further down, it's added again, and that's the one I was just commenting on.
I think since we first brought it up, that this has been pared down quite a bit. There were a number of outstanding ones a few months prior.
In the summertime, it gets a little long because of all of the grass things that go out. And the only reason they're on there is it's always kept open because grass cuttings don't need a second notice. Once they've gone into their, once they receive one notice, that's actually their second notice because we already send out a notice in the paper or Facebook or wherever we send it. Then the second notice is my notice. So the third time they're hit with, we cut the grass. So that's why in the summertime, it gets really long because I need to keep those open because if, you know, if it goes on too long, then they're gonna get a grass cutting.
Explaining that.
Then they all fall off as soon as the grass season's over.
And frequently, those people are repeat offenders.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, thanks for coming in meeting with us, appreciate it. Get to see you in person, yeah, anybody else? Thank you for coming and. Occasions stop by once in a while, that'd be great.
See you guys?
Yeah, likewise. Thanks for coming. Okay. So moving on to consent agenda. So first is the public hearing of March 15, 2022. And that public hearing was regarding the utilization of natural resource trust funds regarding the Elmwood Community Park proposed improvements. With regard to those minutes. Paragraph one, agenda, the first paragraph next to the last line that begins with the word maximum. The next word says aware of 100,000. I'm rather certain that that word, that word is supposed to be award of 100,000? Agreed, okay. So all I saw in these minutes, anybody else see anything in these minutes that we need to discuss?
Point number five, Kealan Water Main location. Just for clarification, it was 60 feet wide on the print. I went back and looked at the packet. And I guess the point I was making was makes the future, so between the and parcel, future and parcel, unbuildable between road and sidewalk right of way.
This is from the public hearing minutes of March 15.
No, that wasn't a public hearing, that was.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to that.
Gotcha, I'm ahead of ya.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to that yet.
Nothing else then on the public hearing one?
Jury's butt. I was truly jumping ahead.
Yes, I was.
Okay, anybody else with the public hearing minutes of March 15? Okay. Then our regular meeting minutes of April 5. Any comments, questions, corrections, discussion regarding those?
Already got my correction.
Okay, great. Got that, Kim?
Yes.
Okay, good. Anybody else in those minutes? Otherwise perfectly prepared? Okay, general fund. Major streets, local streets. Parks and Recreation Fund, Downtown Development Authority Fund, Sewer Fund, Water Fund, Equipment Fund, Payroll Register Report. Water Report. DPW monthly report.
There's zero miles yet.
Because it's July of 2022, too. We'll get your revised one next.
Wastewater Treatment monthly report. Police report. OEO report. Building permit report. Financial position report. Entertain a motion.
Support.
Motion made by President Portem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Stifler to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Objections? Unanimously approved by all council members attending. Now is the time on our agenda for public comment for any item that is on our regular agenda for this evening. Is there any public comment? None. Regular agenda, item number one, approval of auction items. Presentation.
Attached is a list of items we would like to take up to the auction that is being held at the Emily City Fairgrounds. And I can't remember the date, I believe it's the last weekend in April. Well, they're already taking it, so it might be next weekend.
It's coming weekend.
It's this coming weekend.
Do you mean now?
At the Emily City Fairgrounds?
Oh, okay, all right. Multiple municipalities participating in that?
Yes, usually the fairgrounds is full. Municipalities, farmers, anybody who wants to auction off items goes there and it's very well attended.
Okay. Need a motion?
Yes, please. Yes.
I think it's still under consideration. We've approved the funds for it. I think they're having some second considerations about how valuable that might be. How often would it be used? Is it worth spending several thousand dollars to put that on the back of the truck now? Things because we had it, let's get a new one and replace that one. There were some issues with this one anyway, so.
Anybody else, questions or comments? Okay, I think it was a motion by Councilmember Feldman, better known as Pete to me. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Unanimously approved by those council members in attendance. Regular agenda, item number two, Resolution 22-04-02, support of county road millage proposal. Discussion? We had a presentation by Road Commission Chairman Novak last time and council seemed to be, have a consensus that there should be, that the concept from the Road Commission in terms of raising additional funds for additional improvements to roads was the right thing to do. And when you're raising millage, especially in the amount that's being proposed, it should be on the ballot for citizen approval. And the Road Commission is requesting resolutions, I think, from each of the communities referenced in the bailout proposal, which includes the village. And so council has to determine whether it is going to approve Resolution 22-04-02. Note that in the resolution that cities and villages, which includes Elmwood, will receive 100% of the millage generated and township 70%. In the Road Commission, 30% of the leftover township funds. And it's dedicated to repairs, maintenance, and improvements. So any discussion? And if there is none, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution number 22-04-02, supporting the county road millage proposal.
I'll support that.
A motion by Councilmember Stifler, supported by Councilmember Calca, to approve Resolution 22-04-02 in support of the county road commission's millage proposal. Any further discussion or discussion at all?
Calca? Aye. Dyke? Feldman?
Aye.
Lasser?
Aye.
Stifler?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously approved by all council members in attendance. Regular agenda, item number three, fiscal year 2022, third quarter budget amendments. Kim?
As presented in my memo, I don't know if you want me to go through each line item, but.
I like whatever you think is most important.
Just to summarize, I guess, by fund. The general fund, we will see a decrease in fund balance for the year of a little over 19,000. For major streets, we actually have an increase in fund balance for the year of 36,000, almost 37,000. Local streets is running at a deficit at the end of the year by 18,000. Parks and Rec will have a reduction in their fund balance for around 15,000. The water tower debt actually ends up with an increase of 25,410 due to the increase in the millage. It was more than we had anticipated. That's the one we're trying to slowly get rid of to pay for the water tower. Sewer fund, we will be decreasing the fund balance by 156,000. Water fund, again, decreasing fund balance by 181,000. And the equipment fund, see a decrease of almost 29,000. And you had mentioned, Mr. Schneider, the cost of fuel. That was one of the main reasons the equipment fund is going up. We had an increase of over $7,000 in motor fuel, so.
Prices dropping a little bit, who knows? Need to make a visit to Saudi Arabia, see if they can increase oil production. Help with price, but oh well, world's topsy-turvy, so probably gonna stay up for a while depending on what happens globally. Any discussion from council with regard to third quarter budget amendments as highlighted by, highlighted by our clerk treasured?
It's part of the plan we'll be sharing with you over the next several weeks, beginning at our next meeting.
At the workshop, perhaps?
See, it's just a cautionary flag, not so much red, but maybe yellow. And part of it stems from some carryover projects that hit this year's budget, so it obviously made an impact on what was originally forecast. As we're item, helping prioritize what we want to present to you folks at our next meeting and reevaluating what those costs are. We actually have a follow-up staff meeting this Thursday to refine what it is that we think is really important, that we need to spend money on so that we can do our best to maintain a balanced budget.
Else? You do need a motion on the amendments, correct?
Yes.
We have a motion?
I'll support that.
Motion made by President Portem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Calca, approving the third quarter budget amendments as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Budget amendments are unanimously approved by all those council members in attendance. So, oh, now is the time for public comment for any item that is not on our regular agenda for this evening. Any public comments?
The meeting, the budget workshop date?
Yes, that's an open discussion.
It's on the back.
That'll be next. Okay, so that finishes off our regular agenda, public comment, non-agenda, nothing. And so we have to pick a day for a budget workshop meeting, which we have something we do every year because it's the intelligent thing to do. And so the proposal for. May something, oh yeah, the week of May 9.
So the only time this meeting room is available is either that Tuesday or Friday. There's night meetings every other day. But if you wanted to go into the council or the conference room or pick a different room, we could do that as well.
Well, it wouldn't be fair to pick a Friday night because that cuts in everybody's beer night, so. How's the Tuesday looking for everyone? Yeah, it'd be May, it would be May 10. It's good for me. How about, how about everybody else?
It's good for me.
And we normally start at 7:00 PM.
I was going to ask if you wanted to propose a time. 7 o'clock?
Sure, normal. Yeah.
7 o'clock?
Yeah. Okay. Finish up our agenda. Energy Trend, anything to bring to council?
Yes, almost tied in with an open discussion item. In my manager's report I left at your table tonight. Planning Commission had a follow-up discussion regarding the Community Heart and Soul presentation that they had the benefit of a full presentation the month prior. We touched on it briefly during our joint meeting two, two weeks ago. And, actually, I guess it was a month ago now. And the Planning Commission was of a frame of mind that they thought it would be more beneficial if all of the entities within the village and the township got to hear the same message. And so their recommendation is that we survey all of the groups and try to pinpoint a mutual date that works for most people. We know it might be difficult to get 100% attendance, but if we could gather a majority of folks from the village council, the township board, the respective planning commissions, as well as our DDA and Parks Board, that the presenters of the Community Heart and Soul program would be more than happy to come back to Almont and make a full presentation so that everybody hears the same message at the same time, gets to ask questions, hear the responses, et cetera. Tied in with that is I've been given the opportunity to attend the ARMADA kickoff meeting tomorrow afternoon. They're having two sessions, one mid-afternoon and one in the evening, to accommodate people's work schedules. So I'll be able to see firsthand what transpires there as far as kickoff, who was invited, who actually attended, you know, what kind of a community interest is there. But they're pulling the trigger and moving forward. They've identified a fiduciary for taking care of the funds that are necessary to run the program. And, and they actually have a high-ranking representative from the Community Heart and Soul program that's coming in from Vermont to meet with them tomorrow as well. So another benefit for me, attending to be able to meet that person as well. So a potential date that's been cast based on the presenter's schedules, as well as maybe an open Tuesday, and not to make you folks work every Tuesday of the month in May, but May 24th has been thrown out as a possible date for this joint meeting. And so I wanted to survey you folks to find out, is that feasible for your schedules? And we're throwing that date out to the other boards as well, to see if they could accommodate that date. And we could start earlier as well, too. We're thinking maybe like a 6:30 start time, kind of be done by 8. And as a lure, because of all of the different entities that would be coming on board, I would recommend that we have some pizza and beverages here. That's my recommendation, regardless of what day we have it, that we start at 6:30 and have some pizza.
The, on May 24th, it's the fourth Tuesday.
That's correct. And I forgot to look at the calendar to see if this room's even available, but I know when we were talking about it at the Parks Board, that, that Alliance Club was offered as a potential alternate site if we needed for space purposes, or if this room was already booked. So, so I guess, location to be determined, but we're kind of thinking that we could pull it off here.
Response to the manager's inquiry as to the 24th.
Sounds great.
6:30 might be a little tough. 7 is better, but it's possibly doable.
7 is better for you?
7 is a little better for me.
2.
Okay. I commenced 7. I wanted to, you know, since we were talking about it, an earlier start date for the budget meeting, wanted to see if 6:30 might work. 7, 7's fine in my book if that works for you folks. Okay. Well, we'll pass it along to the other groups and reconfirm the start time. They already know about the proposed meeting date, so. And they'll be discussing that at their meetings next week.
Okay. Anything else that you would like to present to, on the council?
Last week I did submit an appropriation request to Congresswoman McLean's office. This is part of the old, what you might recall the earmark program, that's what it used to be called. Now they call it community-funded projects. And, and so they were taking requests from their constituents, municipalities for projects for fiscal year '23. And we've identified East and West St. Clair, accompanied with appropriate sewer and water replacements as well. And Row provided estimated costs for us, the total project, in their eyes could run as high as $5 million. They cushioned the quote a little bit for contingencies, and obviously with the cost of materials seeming to go up, at least this year, you know, who knows what it might be next year, when you actually go out for bid on a project, if we have the good fortune of getting selected. But we were encouraged to provide some costing because projects that show cost indicate that there's some level of shovel readiness, and those are the ones that get higher priority and consideration by the Appropriations Committee. So, and coincidentally, Congresswoman McLean is the scheduled guest speaker at the Economic Club meeting this week. So I will have the chance to meet her face-to-face, and get to know her, and let her know of the need that we have for federally eligible road in our town. That's a critical thoroughfare for us. And see if she can twist some arms and do some horse trading and make sausage to get, get some funding for our community.
And if you need any pictures of the large potholes around the area, I can, I'll take them for you.
Not a bad idea. Yeah. Heavily traveled. So that's, sounds encouraging.
See what shakes out of that. Obviously, we're, you know, looking, waiting for feedback and other grants. And we've submitted the DNR grant for the land acquisition. We won't know for a few months yet. And next month I have the privilege of making our pitch for the Consumers Energy Foundation grant for our fire pit project. And I've been able to find a local landscape architect firm that is willing to do our rendering for us. And our DDA director has found lots of great pictures, and we're putting together our PowerPoint slash video presentation that we need to submit by May 6 before the conference.
Kim?
Just want to introduce my deputy Lisa Capron. She's shadowing me because she will be taking my place at the second meeting in May, as I will be at a treasurer's institute. So, be nice.
Do I have permission to beat up on her like I did with you?
No.
Okay. I'll, I'll be restrained. Okay. Nice, nice to meet you, Lisa. Thanks for attending this evening. Let me see how wonderfully we operate. Wayne, anything to bring to council?
Super. No, actually, I drove by June Drive today and noticed that the house is probably a two-thirds built. So obviously, the water main got moved and everything went smoothly.
Still there, and we're dealing with the easement issues with Mr. Novak, but it's a work in progress. His attorney, that he wanted to have review that draft easement, ended up having back surgery and ended up on the back burner, literally. So I had two conversations with Mr. Novak today, and we hope to get that resolved in the very near future.
His attorney is his brother-in-law, Tim Denny, and passed along the message, "Tim, you have like five attorneys in there. Can somebody else look at it?"
I kind of rhetorically asked that question. I said, "Jim, you must know lots of attorneys. Is that the only guy that can look at this?"
I mean, it's, the easement, it's not really complicated. And there's some good attorneys in the firm besides Tim. Whatever. Just hate to see the things stalled. Yeah, I'm in communication with that office, and so, give them a call. Say, "Hey, guys." Okay. Anything else? Kim?
I own our DPW crew to do that. They are... Okay.
Two, the trees around, the flag was broken to a tree.
Oh, Jesus.
So flag regulations state that there should be clearance from trees within the areas. Those trees around that flag pole should be trimmed appropriately. Three, the couplings that you clip, the clips that you clip on, have extended, have extensions on them that are dangerous for the flag raisers and could damage the flag. So those shouldn't be removed.
Snow there?
They also took down the one at the park because of the same thing. And similar other satellite parks, those flags need to be replaced also. So I wasn't sure myself as, is Park Board responsible for that? It's, they actually orders and replaces baseballs.
Administration, administrative staff does that, and we typically do it every year, usually in May, but...
And for the flags that you're bringing down, if you're folding or if you're spooling appropriately and you've been put in the box, I will take them for you, and we will take care of them for the next fly, protecting them.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that the Lions did a really great Easter egg hunt the other day. And at our meeting last night, they were saying that there was over 400 people there. And they absolutely loved the new playground equipment. So I wanted to all say thank you. That's it. Yes, it is.
Ten, I think, scooped up about 60 eggs or so. And if you didn't get there within the first two minutes, you were shoot out of luck. Because it just got scooped up. Yeah, it was a big, big hit. And, yeah. And it, as it has been mentioned over the last year or two, more and more activity, more and more people are drawn to the park than at previous times. And part of that, I think, is the pandemic, and people just wanted to be out, and out in the community, and communicating with their neighbors and fellow citizens. It's really helpful, especially in times like these. Anything else, Jackie? Also? Okay. So, thank you, all of you, for having a good meeting. And true to Tim's word, we did not break the record. We're adjourned.